Good evening, um, everyone. As the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School community members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota. I didn't hear you, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Uh, Mara Hogan. Okay, and Hillary Griffiths will be, um, absent tonight. Student representatives, um, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Rachel Martins, it looks like you're joining this evening. And.
She just joined, I just.
Okay, yeah, I see, I see Rachel joining us, okay, Rachel, just. Want to make sure you can hear. Okay.
She can unmute, she should, uh, try it now, Rachel.
Oh, I can, I can unmute now, thank you.
Okay, wonderful, Rachel, um, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, Colleen Andrade.
Yes.
Brian Haas.
Yes.
Chuck Karajanus.
Yes.
Wayne White.
Yes.
And then, I'm not sure if I could see everyone who is in person, Brian, can you?
Yep, nah, Mr. Soto. He's here for the. The EF trip.
Okay, great. Um, alright, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two of the Act of two thousand and twenty-three, signed into law by Governor Healy on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This act continues to exempt certain provisions of, under the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. While an option to, um, remeet, or an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to remote attendees unless otherwise required by law. Please know that this meeting is being recorded accordingly, be aware that, um, that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer, anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chairs required by law. And I don't see anyone making note of that. Um. Along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School website in the folder titled two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Public comments agenda is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general ground rules for any public comment period. A person wishing to speak and make a comment during a virtual meeting may do so by signing up to speak publicly in advance and up to the public comment. Agenda item at the link provided on the agenda. Please make, um, please have your Zoom name match so that we can unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the Chair. As time allows, a Chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to a topic that has not yet been brought up. Any person wishing to submit written comments to be read by the Chair may do so by emailing comments in advance up into the public comments agenda item to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. The subject line must state "public comment." Please ensure your first and last name and your town, um, are indicated to ensure your comments are read. Comments will only be read for three minutes. If the, um, submitted comments are longer, they will be suspended at the three-minute mark to ensure all comments can be read in their entirety. It is suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty words, however, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Anyone wishing to submit a comment for the public record after the public comments agenda item has passed can do so by emailing commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us up into the end of the meeting, indicating that they would like these comments to be included. Uh, meeting ground rule, before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for a clear and, um, clear and effective conduct of the meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks, I'll ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I'll go through the members for any additional comments or questions, if time allows, please hold off speaking. Enter your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. If members wishes, wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who's speaking. Finally, we, um, each vote tonight will be taken via roll call to vote. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order via roll call. Um, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Mara Hogan.
Yeah.
Elizabeth Albota. And Natasha Rivera, yes, so we'll call the meeting to order at seven oh eight. Um. First item on the agenda is urgent business. Super urgent, nope. Okay, then the next thing we have is our public comments. Um. And. Let's see, we have, we do have a few, so let me go ahead and start, um. Okay, this public comment, some of these comments, um, arrived around the time we met last week, which we did not have a public comments, um, meeting or agenda item for the joint meeting with the, the select board, so this may relate to that, um, that as well. Good morning, School Committee. Uh, bottom line upfront, you do not need bleachers to play the games, you absolutely do need a safe, quality playing surface to play the games. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be part of the bleacher task force. As a user of the athletic fields from a coach, referee, player, parent perspective on the calls, I am very pleased with the expertise brought to this project through Huntress and the progress being made on the bleachers. Attending these meetings during the workday Wednesdays at one-thirty has been challenging but worth it. However, in discussions with community, albeit my friends and community, um, and soccer colleagues, as well as in discussions at the rec, uh, committee meeting, the last one, concerns over the playing surface far exceeds the concerns over the bleachers. I've participated in a few of these capital improvement projects in Maynard. Each resulted in compromising compromises that we really did not want to make. Suffice to say, continuing this project without seeking, without considering replacing the track and playing surface seems very short-sighted. Any project of this scope must go to the taxpayers to, uh, for a vote to further can, um, to further incur debt. When weighing the cost of renting bleachers for sports seasons as required versus the estimated cost of this project, we can rent bleachers for a very long time and not come close to the going-in estimate cost of the project. We spent twenty-four thousand on nine hundred rental seats for the fall two thousand and twenty-three season. Our going-in estimate for the bleacher project is three point one million, that's over one hundred fall seasons of bleacher rentals. I strongly recommend that we leverage Huntress's expertise to obtain an estimate for a playing surface and track replacement in considering the bleachers design. I was able to influence consideration of an improved, proper-sized playing surface and new track, resulting in a soccer field that is approximately one hundred and fifteen yards by seventy yards. Huntress's design is done with that in mind. Huntress was able to show how one such enlarged playing surface could fit with the new bleachers on the existing plot. We owe it to the community and to the bo- voters to get estimate for what, um, for that, that is an add. This may result in two warranted questions, which is fine. Then the voters, taxpayers can decide just bleachers and bathrooms or a playing surface too. Bottom line, you don't need bleachers to play football, soccer, or field hockey, but you do need a safe, quality playing surface. Even the retiring football coach at MHS Fall Award Ceremony stumped for a new playing surface, calling out the struggles a soccer team had as part of the outgoing message to the schools and community. And to hear at the last CPC meeting that they're to move afoot to spend money on the fieldhouse, we really need a comprehensive plan, one that focuses on quality, on providing a quality playing service for our student athletes. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully, Tom Hasback, Two Chandler Street in Maynard. Next comment. Dear Maynard School Committee members, I have recently been informed of the ongoing discussions in both the School Committee and Board of Selectmen around replacing the bleachers at Alumni Field. As a parent of a Maynard High School, uh, girls soccer varsity player, as well as a referee and a ma- NYAS coach, I have had many opportunities to both observe and participate in myriad of activities on Alumni Field and make a vehement plea to the committee to prioritize spend on the field before any plans to build new bleachers or a fieldhouse. Player's safety and risk of injury has been directly related to poor playing quality of fields in numerous studies, as has impact on player performance due to behavior modifications based on their perceived susceptibility to injury playing on poor quality fields. Just this past fall season, I watched a number of varsity girl soccer players suffer injuries due to various poor field-related conditions such as surface hardness, the inability to absorb impact energy, traction, lack of footing or slipperiness, evenness, tripping hazards including undulations, holes, et cetera, and grass cover. Low percentage of grass cover, poor grass condition. My own daughter suffered two concussions after two separate instances of hitting the hard-packed ground dirt that make up at least one-third of the field. While renting bleachers for the foreseeable future is certainly not the optimal choice, it is an acceptable one that allows for the pursuit of the greater need of a safe, quality playing field for optimal safety and performance for all of our young athletes. I appreciate the hard work and dedication of all of our school committee members, and I look forward to hearing your response. Thank you for your consideration. In this matter, best, Tara Consada, Six Randall Road. Okay, this one. Hello, I understand there is a plan to propose a project to replace the bleachers at Alumni Field. Yes, I agree that a safe replacement should be made, however, I am wary as a parent and as a doctor of physical therapy with over twenty-five years of experience that the bleachers will be replaced and the field surface will not be altered. I al- also understand that the cost of construction, new bleachers far outweighs the cost of rental bleachers for many, many years. Understanding that there is limited recreational space in Maynard and as a result, Alumni Field is shared by many of our high school and middle school athletes. Maintenance of the field surface is a significant issue. As we saw a high school soccer match postponed after a rainy football resulted, football game resulted in the field being torn up with divots, tire tracks, and bare dirt left in areas. This playing surface is unsatisfactory and unhealthy for our young athletes. The bleachers have no bearing on the safety and well-being of these student athletes. Anterior ACL injuries are rampant in sports, especially for female adolescent athletes. There are many factors to be considered, however, field field surface is a significant one and does statistically correlate with ACL injuries. This is not to mention other injuries due to poor footing, traction, stepping in divots and holes on an unpredictable surface and the like. As a ma- as maintenance of a dirt and grass field is challenging, has a turf surface not been proposed? Clearly, if construction of new bleachers and, as I understand it, ADA compliant access to the press box, meaning an elevator, um, and restrooms are also being considered. Why not consider revamping the playing surface as well? A turf surface not only requires less maintenance, but allows for a predictable and safer surface uh, than that which exists at Alumni Field. Alumni Field with its position as at a major intersection in our town is a place of community recreation with many of the community, uh, attending football, field hockey games, soccer matches, and track and field meets, gathering for graduation, and walking along the track there. It's a welcome mat to Maynard. I am writing in support of a total overhaul of the track, field surface, concessionary, and bleachers with the addition of a restroom and encourage the school committee to consider altering their proposal to include these components. With these upgrades, Alumni Field would become a welcoming site and site, not an eyesore for many considering making Maynard home. Regards, Amy Hasback at Two Chandler Street.
Um. We do. One person in the audience, I believe, who has a comment.
Okay, alright. I don't see anyone just, um, looking participants remote that have their hand raised. Um, Colleen, can you just confirm that as well, that we just, right now we just have an audience number?
Yeah, what was that?
Okay. Alright. Tom, is that?
Yep, that's me, sorry. So, thank you for reading those letters, I think were intended, as you said, for the meeting that happened last week. Uh, but did notice that something that, uh, all the comment wasn't on the agenda, but you know, that maybe it would be a public comment consideration at that meeting, uh, to be part of it. But, uh, just to buy the numbers, you have roughly forty girls playing field hockey. They play on the back baseball field. And once a year, they get to play on that field, and I went to that game, it was a great game. It was like watching the girls play on. Was it? There were sixteen boys that played football, basically. I mean, you've all watched those kids. See, I think they have them very well, they're, they're fun. There's about forty boys, though, that play soccer in Maynard. They had a game canceled. JDK game canceled. And then Marcy did a game moved. But it's. There are forty girls that play soccer on that field. And if you went to those games, you saw the injuries are terrible, right? You went to the boys' game, you saw the turning. You know, so the playing surface is a mess. And why do we bring these things up? And it's, it's about player safety. It's about student athlete safety, it's about growing these student athletes to be not only students that have high achievement, but playing the sport in high school is learning how to be part of something fair. It's learning how to be a contributor to a team. Learning how to stretch yourself physically and mentally as well as the academics. And preparing these kids with these sort of life experiences, and some of them want to go off of the college. And if we, sorry, teach soccer player, that's come a lot of Maynard now, we're paying attention to the WSL app. There was a young lady from Maynard out. I mean, the second round. But, uh, they watch a mother, they play professional soccer. So, these things are real, that's, obviously athletics isn't even number one priority, that's academics, that's supposed to be. But we're going to have the academics and student athletic, have to provide a state of fire. We recognize that by having an athletic trainer to budget. We really appreciate you all, but, 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 friends of Maynard Soccer provided the athletic training for the soccer. Because we wouldn't provide the athletic training, so. Donations provided at the tennis soccer. We gladly recognize that that's not necessarily a sustainable model, and that is a question. So, the plea for the field, if we're going to be fixing Alumni Field, the pleas for the bleachers are unsatisfactory, the bleachers are unsafe. But the kids don't play the sports on. They're putting them on. So, here down the bleachers, bringing the red ones. You, they'll buy you time to figure out how to get some. Uh, at the meeting that happened at the, at the last Bleacher Task Force meeting, there were additional people brought up on the table that actually. And that was good, because they felt like they were disenfranchised by previous situations, they feel like they weren't informed. But the list of things that they brought for that meeting was a comprehensive list of things that need to be believed. I don't know why, that, that combo, not just the bleeds, it's not just the pitch, they had a long list of things. So the perception is that we don't have a holistic purpose. And then we're focusing on something that isn't, that is really not necessary to play in games. Play the game on a field, but that's what we. Thank you very much. If you have any questions.
No, thank you, and thank you for your participation. I know it's a hard meeting time to, to make. Um, Colleen, anyone else for public comments?
Not in the audience, and I don't see anyone alone.
Okay, alright, so then we're gonna move on to our student representatives report, Rachel, the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you. Um, so it's just me tonight, first, for you all, I have our highlights that we put together. So first, we had the indoor track and basketball. We've had a really successful week, the boys winning, and I know that one of our students just had a personal record. Um, we also had NHS induction. There was a lot of new members who joined on January twenty-ninth, especially in my grade, the juniors. All new members who are juniors have the privilege to leave at lunch now. Um, we had the Camilla Gardens concert, which was the Maynard Goons Band. They all went to Camilla to perform for, um, all the residents there, they performed a bunch of old and new songs. The residents really loved it, and they were dancing, they loved talking to the high school students. We also had our Hundred Days Celebration. Um, so Student Council, we hid a bunch of rubber, rubber ducks, and we kind of created like a bingo and rubber duck challenge for the students, which came with a pizza party and then Dunkin' gift cards. We also had, uh, our super, or Superintendent Haas, he came to an SAC meeting, and he explained the process for determining delays in snow days, and I know a lot of us are still talking about this together, and it was really helpful, and we really enjoyed hearing the process. Um, we have new advisories starting, so one of those were the Lego Club by one of our teachers, Ms. Fulham. She started this because we all were talking about it, and a bunch of the students really just have loved it, a bunch of them joined it. We also had that the Playtech Crew had their first, um. Oh, I can't, I think there's a typo, it's like a practice for the musical Annie. Um, and then we also have the planning the trip to Ireland in June two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, SAC wanted to come and just say that we fully like support this trip, and a bunch of us were really interested in it when we first got the email about it. Next up, we have our concerns and solutions. First, we have flexible seating, so me and Kaylee, our other, um, representative, are looking into possible furniture to be purchased with a grant for students all around the school, not just in certain classrooms. So this would be, um, more comfortable seating, seating for like fidgeting, stuff like that, just for any students that need it. And then we also had Earth Day. So Student Council and Green Committee are teaming up together to plan an Earth Day event for MHS. The lead teachers are in support as long as there's an educational component to it, and then there's gonna be like some accountability, like, project for the students to learn about it and to ensure the participation. And then last we have, or, sorry, last we have our up- upcoming events. So first, we obviously have February break, which we are all very excited about. We have the basketball senior nights on February ninth and February thirteenth. Progress reports come out next, uh, Friday, and then MASC Hyannis Conference is in March from the sixth to the eighth. Our Spanish exchange trip is over break, and then our Deco trip is around the same time as Hyannis, it's the seventh to the ninth. We also, um, around that time, basketball playoffs and the Valentine's Day Grams, and then lastly, we have our clerk tournament. And that's all we have in our report, is there any questions?
Uh, thank you for your report, I'll, I'll go around to see, start with Mary.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel, um, regarding the flexible seating, I know, um, Maynard Education Foundation, we have funded um, pilots down at the elementary school and at the middle school for, for alternative seating, so you might wanna put together a grant proposal, um, to Maynard Education Foundation, pilot. Thanks.
Okay, oh, oh, thank you.
Uh, Mara.
Do you know how many, um, in- inductees there were for the, uh, NHS?
Um, I'm actually not sure, I can check and like come back with that next time. I want to say probably somewhere between like, I'm sorry, ten and fifteen, I'm guessing, but I have no clue.
Thank you.
Elizabeth?
I know, no questions, thank you for the reply.
Rachel, thank you, um. I, um. I actually just, I know that you, Kaylee, uh, my only question is not necessarily related to this, but one of the things that is of high interest, that I know the students have worked on the bleacher project. And, you know, I know that we've sought student feedback in in one, in one element or a couple elements, but I'm, I would be curious to understand how, um, students would really feel about continuing rental bleachers on a, a long-term basis as opposed to a permanent structure, I know that hasn't really been part of our discussion because our plans have been a certain way, but I know there's a lot of community feedback on different areas, and so it would be interesting to hear some, some more feedback, um, on, on that particular aspect for. And I don't know if it's been discussed in particular within, um, the SAC or not.
Um, we've talked about it a little, I know like the biggest concern that we've talked about is graduation for bleachers, not so much, um, sports, but I can definitely talk to everybody, because we all, I know, I think last year, we all attended something to talk about the bleachers, but hasn't come up as much recently other than graduation ceremonies. So I can talk to everybody and get their opinion on that, because I actually was like listening to the public comments. And it like, about to get everybody's opinion on like field versus the bleachers, so. I can definitely talk to everybody during our next meeting and then have it a part of our report for the next meeting that we attend.
That would be helpful feedback, just to consider, um, and right now, just for, you know, for your, and we'll talk more about bleachers in a little bit as well, so I don't know if you want to hang around. Um, that might help also relay some information, so I don't know, um, what your schedule is like, but we, we will go in a little bit more in-depth based on some more recent conversations, um. That might also help, you know, provide some more factual updates to the SAC to help, you know, formulate a thought or two for us, okay?
Yeah.
Be great. Alright, um, well, thank you for your update, and guess we will be moving on now, Brian, to the proposed, um, high school EF trip to Ireland.
Yeah, great, we actually have, uh, staff members here, some online to quiet support. And Mr. Soto here to take you through the presentation and explain the ins and outs of the proposed trip to Ireland.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Um, so hello, School Committee, thank you for having me. Um, I'm here to seek the approval to bring students on a nine-day educational trip to Ireland in June of two thousand and twenty-five. Um. My name is William Soto. I am a first-year teacher at Maynard High School, I teach math and business, um, there, and I just want to aid students in uh, experiencing different peoples, cultures, and perspectives around the world. I've been on two educational tours before myself with this tour company, EF Educational Tour, and it has completely changed my, for the better, in my community. Um, go ahead, a couple slides, one more. Sorry, I didn't know who was changing the slides, that's, you know, all right, oh, so. EF Educational Tours has over fifty-five years of experience, they're the world leaders in international education, and they're right, just like our school. Also, Maynard has traveled with them eleven times before, so Maynard has a trusted relationship with them, and I have also spent personal time with them in the past. So the tour looks as follows, it's called the Emerald Islands Tour, we're going to Dublin, Kilkenny, Cork, Larny, Ring of Kerry, The Warden, and Galway. Along this trip, we're gonna see a lot of amazing things. Um, if we go to the next slide, we'll see, one of the great things we're going to visit is the Saint Patrick's Cathedral. On the next slide, you also see that we are going to visit the Blarde Castle, where sportsmen have the opportunity to piss the blarenstone for those who dare. Um, next slide, we will go over the travel dates. Our requested travel dates are June twenty-second through thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, which is shortly after the school year ends. Although there is flexible dates, where the early June twentieth, and the latest weekend return is July second, so a nine-day trip in that period. The reason for the flexible date is so EF can create the best on-ground experience for us, we wouldn't. We wouldn't have to be put with another school while there, travel together on the bus. To place to place. So that would be why there is uh, dates on the next slide. So what's included in our itinerary and our, our cost is round trip airfare, hotel stays. Regional-style meals twice a day for uh, breakfast and dinner. We will have a tour guide with us twenty-four seven while we are on the trip, staying in the same accommodations as us and everything. Transportation from location to location, local guides, guided sightseeing and entrance to every attraction we are going to see on the trip. Um, next slide, uh, safety is our number one priority as is with EF. EF has local support inside worldwide along with the safety and incident response team. They have rigorous health standards and of course, the twenty-four-seven tour director and chaperone team that will be with us. Now, I want everyone to book with common field talent when they do book this trip. So for our group here at Maynard, we will have the peace of mind program, which allows us. Sorry, um, which allows us to change trip during uncertain times such as. Hopefully not with like a COVID two point O situation, um, we would be allowed to change the trip for unforeseen circumstances. Each traveler is also in the price going to be uh, getting the global travel protection. Which is a base travel protection that covers baggage, property, um, trip cancellations, interruption. So and they can also purchase for an additional cost of global travel protection plus. Which is everything I just said and also allows for cancellation for any reason up to twenty-four hours prior to departure. And there's a risk-free enrollment period where they would be able to get a hundred percent re- uh, money back if they decide to enroll on that time. So I wanna make this ad financially acceptable to everyone. Um, so there is the global. Scholarship, which is offered through EF for any traveler enrolled. Through them. So any of the students who enroll in the trip through us would be able to apply for this trip and I would. Be more than happy and helpful with that process. There's also a customizable tour fundraising page, which will give the students a link, send out to friends, family, loved ones. And they could donate directly to that student's trip. Alright, so it won't go towards whole group, it'll go off that student. Um, I have personally used some of my trips in amazing. Tool to have for birthdays, holidays in between before the trip. Um, the next slide. Now, there's many flexible payment options as you see. The cost for us is thirty, about, about thirty-nine hundred dollars with our discount during the. Enrollment period, which would end March thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Um, if a family or student decides to book after that, it would go up to four thousand ninety-nine dollars in total. And you have all of these great options such as bi-weekly payment, monthly payment. And if a family can't pay monthly, bi-weekly, or wants to pay larger, less frequent installments, they can do that as well. Again, thank you for having me. I heard as much as that you might have.
Thank you. Um, I'll start the school committee, um, Mary Branley, any, any questions?
Um, thank you very much. As I mentioned, I'm jealous. Like to be going on a trip with you yet. Um, just a question about um, the ratio of students to um, to adults and are there any other um, teaching professionals or?
Yeah, so currently, the ratio that we're gonna stick with, see handed, it would be my first time leaving a tour. It's going to be their lowest ratio, which is six to one student staff ratio. Currently onboard with me, I have Betty McAvon, who's also a teacher at the high school. As well as a few other interested um, teachers from the high school, if we would need that ratio of staff.
Mauro?
Fantastic. I, I love the fact that um, we have that um, that fundraising page. That's really awesome. I don't have any other questions, so thank you.
Uh, there is an option for parents to be chaperones and independent priests for anyone over the twenty. As well as a background check from through EF for anyone over the twenty-one, be a chaperone. Um, yeah, so when nurses not required to go with us. Um, as we have the professional group EF who's going to be with us and have been trained to work with local officials and things like that. Um, is there an option that we've been looking at though, is bringing a nurse or a professional with that medical experience with us? So they would be doing like medication for the kids. It would be the tour director, which is me, um, which I would go propel regulations to the thing like that with. Um, the nurse that's the Facebook nurse Janet, um, prior to and we would set that up prior to the trip. So I would be holding medicine and think of that picture.
Um, and then I got a question is, the only thing I can see that would be a barrier would be that right now in our school, probably the last day school is seventeen. Yes, and then if we have two snow days that brings to your first day. And I'm, I'm sure that if we were to talk about that, either, you know, what, what are we thinking of, or like if it goes over time.
Uh, so if that would happen, where we would have to go extra days or mixed days potentially. Um, I have talked with the principal of, your over at um, the high school. And she said she is more than willing to accommodate her specifics for those specific students to maybe take their part most early. Or work around their schedule as well. So we have talked about that, nothing set in stone of how exactly we would do that. The only idea was allowing them to take early or on a different day prior to departure.
Okay, and if kids, and if kids want the scholarship, they can get it by writing something or something.
Yeah, there's an application process on EF, um, the website that we're going to. I have a professional helping me and I would also help them um, with that.
Set my question. Yes, the interest so far.
Yeah, so we reach out to students in two different ways. One was just a feeler email. We were like, hey, would you be interested in not knowing any information? Um, and then we had a, after we got a great response of fifty or so students that either said yes or yes, but I need more information. We had a in-person meeting where there was about twenty-two students and then a few that we knew couldn't show up. And um, from that meeting, we told them the price, we told them uh, free itinerary. Uh, things of that nature where we have gotten great feedback with a couple of students coming back after talking to their parents and saying. They're extremely interested and still wanna go and there will be after this night, a meeting with parents as well.
I love the timing to really use a good time.
Yes, yeah, that, that was one of our biggest priorities, was giving a sixteen-month window to pay for the trip. Again, we want to be as accessible to all schools as possible, um, no matter if that's just accessible within the high school or financially accessible. Yeah, so a minimum number of students would be anything less than ten is not guaranteed to go. Um, there are schools that travel with four or five students, but they're not guaranteed. It would have to work with another um, school that has traveled to that same trip at the same time. So ten would be guaranteed, we are going on this trip, less than ten. We might not go, but in that case, there would be a hundred percent refund to all parents and families who have started paying.
Okay, I have um, a couple of questions and uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, Elizabeth touched on one of them, which I just wanted to expand about the, the medication and, and the nursing aspect a little bit. Um, I do know that a lot of countries have different medication laws of what's allowable to be brought in. And administered and how is that, without a nurse, being part of that, how is that? How is that able to be, I guess, relayed to families or what is your plan for helping inform? Potential restrictions. I know that a lot of our kids have increased uh, medication needs. And um, just wanna make sure that there's no surprises to anyone. Um, you know, if there's like anxiety, these kind of things that might occur.
Yeah, so um, as I said prior, I will be working with um, Nurse Janet prior to the trip. As well as I have support through EF, the, the EF agency themselves, where I'm currently working with. Um, Brian Hart, who is the Middlesex um, Schools kind of liaison for these trips. And once this trip gets approved, I will be working with another person, I don't know who yet, that will. Um, answer these questions for me. I don't wanna give out any misinformation, but I do know that. Um, if in the case there was, there was a trip I went on in the past where certain medications were not allowed. Then you would have to know that prior to, and typically, um, the country doesn't have a restriction against. Anti-anxiety medications or things of that nature, more along the line of. Let's say certain ingredients and cough medicines or things like that. So uh, I don't wanna give out any specific information I don't have, but as soon as I get that information, I can relay it to Superintendent Haas to get to you.
Yeah, that would be great. Just I, and I, in particular, I just know Japan is one of those countries and um, they have some particular issues with the. ADHD medicines and um, and I don't know other countries, but I imagine everyone has their own particulars. That'd be good just to make sure families are aware of those country-specific restrictions. As well. Uh, question number two, when you were talking about minimum. Minimum amount of students that would be needed. It sounds like for this trip to be viable, ten students would be minimally required. Um, if, and I'm hoping that you would be able to achieve that, but would there be consideration to? Um, open this up to main, other Maynard students who maybe aren't Maynard High School. But maybe are residents in Maynard to attend, since there is indication that other schools may also be part of this anyway. Just to make it a viable, um, you know. Probably, you know, I would, I don't know. I don't know how that would work, but I just was wondering, Maynard is so small. Sometimes you have, you know, siblings or um, neighbors. And um, it might be something that I'd hate for the trip not to move forward if you could, you know, maybe get another Maynard resident. Um, student who might be um, excited about it.
Yeah, absolutely. We have talked, uh, me and Betty McAvon have talked about opening this up to eighth graders potentially. Um, in the year, because by the time they travel, they will be in the high school as well. Um, we've also talked about anyone with a sibling. We would open it up for maybe a special accommodations for them who have siblings, eighth grade, going to be in the high school. Uh, but it is something we have talked about. We haven't planned anything. We want to gauge interest within the high school. But of course, if it's a way to make the trip viable, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't open it up um, to students outside of the high school.
That's, that's great that the conversations, I, I would hate for our size of a school to limit the possibilities of, of a great opportunity. Um, my last question is um. Is really about thinking about planning the year going into the trip. It would be really, I don't know, if thought, like how. We can start getting as the kids do enroll, like culturally prepared. You know, is there a project or some type of like um, student, um, I don't know. They call like a peer, like connecting with a school in Ireland where the students might be able to start, you know, talking about. Certain sites or things that are exciting with them. It would be great to kind of have something lead up to the actual trip that's part of their. Maybe studying or whatever that might be. Um, but I'd be curious or interested to see if there's a way you can embed. Um, this during the year, leading up to it. So it kind of ends up being a culmination of. You know, what they may have learned and tie it, you know, into something that was school-related per se um, throughout the year.
Yeah, so absolutely. Um, for anyone who registers for this trip, there will be multiple meetings beforehand. Uh, with me and other chaperones, where I plan on going over things like as. What to bring on the trip and then also into the culture of where we are going. Um, some of the amazing sights we're going to see, things like that. I love the idea of maybe trying to get a peer connection in Ireland. I would absolutely love that. That's something I will look into for sure. Um, but I plan on having meetings with these students on a regular basis. To go over things about culture, about respect in, in different countries and specifically where we're going, Ireland and things of that nature.
Wonderful. I love it. Um, that's all I have. And oh, it looks like Mary has maybe another question.
Sam has been involved, we have probably already talked to her, but she might be able to, to give you a good idea of how to make that connection like that, if it's a good idea.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, this has been a amazing resource so far that I've gone to. Um, maybe more than she would like, but I have you here as a great resource.
Brian, I, I, I see this is not listed as something we're voting on, right? This is more for information only, or is this a vote? Gonna make sure.
I think you need to take a vote to approve.
I do, I think so too. I just wanted to make sure I was, okay. Alright, so um, I will make a motion that we, hold on, oop, I just closed the presentation. That we approve the um, let's go to Ireland trip planned for um, twenty twenty-five. That's it. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call, Mary Branley.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan? Elizabeth Alboto? Alright, and Natasha Rivera, yes, motion carries. Please keep us updated, very exciting.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Wonderful. Okay, um, now we will go on to the superintendent report. Superintendent Haas, the floor is yours.
I'm very excited to be here. We have just some updates. I know there's sort of a packed agenda after this, so. Just to let you know, um, I did have the opportunity to meet with the student advisory council at the high school last week and it was actually a lot of fun. Uh, they were curious about how the decision for Lades, Snow Days, et cetera are made. Uh, they were a great audience, they were very attentive and I think it was a good experience all the way up. Uh, budget update, you received the budget, the updated budget presentation. That I'll present on Saturday morning at the joint review. It's the same project. Uh, similar presentation, just focused uh, on, into ten slides. So we'll be presenting that on Saturday. We worked hard to get ourselves there. Uh, you know from the most recent smores, we sent out the district report card last week. We updated our webpage as well. Um, so it actually has the section now on home page, the landing page of MPS Projects. And then under that, it has the building, Green Meadow School Building Project, the Alumni Field Bleacher Project and the MHS Solar Project. So a nice landing spot for people to find any information about any of those and as our projects continue, that's. Um, and Collier's lucky for us, um, they're the owners project manager, owners project manager on both the Green Meadow and the Alumni Field. So they funnel information pretty consistently to us that goes there. Uh, Colleen does a nice job of putting it out on social media and Select, who is the company doing the solar project, that's his job. Funneling information our way and being in touch with, by we meetings with them as well. So lots of building or just projects. Uh, so it's a lot of work about all of those. Um, MSBA this week, they were doing borrowings around the building. Uh, parents weren't informed beforehand. DPW is part of that discussion. Our own facilities team was part of the discussion as was the building level administration. We're gonna talk about bleachers, so I don't need to talk about that now. The solar project, I'm, I don't know if you would buy it recently, but the fence is up in front of where. Front parking was, the loop is still open for buses and traffic, um, so they're making progress. And most recently this week, there was some people um, from, and I forget the exact title of the committee, but it's related to trees. Obviously not the tree committee, but maybe the tree committee, but the connection was made between them and Select and that was part of. Um, so they're removing a handful of trees right in front of the park, but they're replanting them on. Or they're getting new trees and having that discussion, but that's been part of. Long to the trees. Um, this week, very exciting, it is National School Counselor Week. So just an opportunity to give um, appreciation and thanks to all the work our school counselors do from Green Meadow to follow to the high school. They, like everybody, teachers, everybody. Um, but specifically, it's, it's been weak to be recognized because they work so hard and it's been, you know, that job has probably expanded exponentially since the pandemic. So thank you for all you do, even though I don't see you up here right now. Um, we did appreciate. Uh, spring athletics as well is open to the, you know, um. Mr. Arius sent things out, we've sent things out in our uh, weekly updates as well, so students and parents have an opportunity. If interested to participate in spring athletics. So it's been a lot of good. Fun, we actually had, so that, one of the things that didn't make the um. Fun, we actually had, so that one, one of the things that didn't make the, um, report would be. The spelling bee at Fowler, probably made the s'mores tomorrow. I don't have all the written information in front of me. Um, but it was held here at Fowler yesterday, and I know I have, uh, director of curriculum with us right now. With Karen Janus, who did happen to catch some of it, so I'm, if you want to say a couple of words about the spelling bee.
All the, uh, all the grades were represented. Uh, it went many, many rounds, and I mean that in a good way. Because the students were doing such a good job, um, and I would say it was in the neighborhood of. Uh, audience was about fifty or sixty people, mostly parents, family members. So it was a tremendous, uh. Um, turnout and the, uh, this is part of the script Howard National Spelling Bee, so, uh, it's off to regionals. Here or area, how would they build up to Washington, let's see. Uh, so it was very exciting, very well attended. Um, and, uh, it's nice to see competitions, uh, and events like this come back after. Not seen these, so.
What was the winning word? We know.
I'll follow up and let you know tomorrow. I don't.
Yeah, put it, put it in the s'mores, that'd be great to.
Do you know that it, uh, to achieve the winner, and I don't remember the two words, but. When one of the two finalists misses a word, the next person has to spell a word correctly or it continues, so that. It's, uh, very dramatic on top of that.
Can be, yeah. Thank you. Awesome.
That's what I have for you. It's been an exciting, um, been an exciting couple of weeks, I know, because. Tom happens to be in the audience and be reminded me that one of our swimmers, right, is going to sectionals. So that's super exciting. That's a new program for us. It's a co-op, um, and clearly doing very well. Our indoor track runners, our girls team performed really well last weekend down at Reggie Lewis Center. Um, boys did well too. The girls happened to come in, I think they were fighting for second or third place. Um, so really a lot of good healthy competitions going on.
Wonderful, and, um.
I don't know if you can hear that, the girls swim team tied for fourth in distance. Thank you.
Oh, congratulations. I, I had heard, um, they did a fantastic job. So congratulations with that. And, um, Brian, the MSBA, I don't know if you had mentioned, because I know that this was kind of. Um, we, we got confirmation from the state that they received all of our paperwork for the. Award, right, that, um, the amendment.
In dollars to the town. Um, responsible for, so we anticipated that it was sort of. It, it's now fine.
Yeah, it's not fine. They have the paperwork, um, they got all the signatures, which was a little bit of an undertaking. They had people in Florida who had assigned papers, so. Colleen, thank you for coordinating all that. Okay, um, so we will be, oh, go ahead and, yeah, I had a couple of questions. Mary, go ahead.
Just about the, um, so the budget presentation and that, so when, when you and I, when we shared the budget, so to me. We also talked to Wayne about the quarterly report and I thought that was going to be, like, this quarterly report, I think.
If it's final, we, I think we just wanted to know and make sure, and you know what, let me just make sure he didn't email. I think we were just looking to get the okay, it's. Final, final, and then we would wanna. It may be, I'll check and see if it gets stuck with me, um, but once. Yeah, and then if it, once it is, um, then we would want to post it on our, on our website for the, thanks, Mary, for bringing that up, reminding. Anything else, Mary? Morrow? Elizabeth? Okay, uh, and the only thing that I wanted to add budget-wise, I know we're going to be meeting. But the preliminary cherry sheets, uh, came out from the state, the, the House, House Two, I guess it's called the governor's. Um, budget, and so Greg mentioned this at the select board meeting the other day, but the, um. We're a little short, um, not going in the better direction, but when I say we, he means, um, looking at it. The charter reimbursement is lower than anticipated than in prior year. On the upside though, which I was. Very pleased to see is the assessment for charter school sending is going, has ticked down. Um, so I don't, I mean, I know this is the first iteration of that, but I don't know if we've really seen, um. Starting off to tick down from a prior year, so I was optimistic to, I think it's a good number to, to monitor. Um, and then the, the school choice as assessment, which is what we get charged for is. Ticking up, so that's, you know, I've already expressed my concerns with the school choice in general, but I just wanted to. Those are the things that just stood out, um, from the cherry sheets as, um, most pressing. But the reimbursement for the charter school tuition is coming in almost two hundred thousand, lower than. Um, last year, so these are just preliminary, but things to monitor. Okay, Brian, um, and then also, yes, kudos to our national, our counselors, I mean, they, I, I. Seeing all the, the major, uh, school talk about budgets and staffing and every. Every conversation that I've seen in other towns are about looking for more counseling, needing more counselors. And filling spots for counseling positions, so there is just such a dire need for that outside of Maynard, so I'm very appreciative of the work that they do as well. Um, all right, so I guess, Brian, do we move on to budget? I mean, um, bleacher?
Sure.
Okay, all right, so. There's been a lot of conversation from last week with the school committee. We met with the select board. This week, the select board had, uh, their own meeting, um, we had a meeting with the design team the other day. We've received feedback, um, I attended Brian, myself and, and, uh, Mike attended the CPC meeting last night. And so I think based on everyone, I'd wanted to, one, get a sense of everyone's thoughts on where we are. Um, do everyone, does everyone still feel that we are, our timing of this project is still. Uh, where we would want to see things go, um, does anyone want to strongly consider, um, delaying? To the fall, um, given the feedback that we've heard, um, so I just wanted to open the board up to a conversation. Um, you know, Mary, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to start with.
No, um, I, I, I'm feeling like we do need to take, to, you know, delay it until at least the fall. Um, because we haven't had enough opportunity to educate people or, you know, of the final plan and that kind of. So, um, that being said, I, I do want to know what costs are associated with that, if we follow our contract. Yeah, with Huntress, is it additional, not for rental of the bleachers? That, that scenario, so I'd like to know full scope.
Yeah, um, so what we know so far is that Greg indicated that he is planning to. He has budgeted for rental for next year. Um, so that's, you know, Mike, Aria. Has, um, put together some numbers because the question, you know, gets raised about like long-term bleacher rental and what that. Um, looks like, and, um, so Mike, Aria has put together the numbers, the bleachers that we've rented historically. Are, um, are not fully ADA compliant all the time, so that would be one consideration. The other consideration is that, um, the current bleachers are condemned. Eventually, and we would not be able to retain those bleachers in their current form. Uh, for a long period of time, which means that we would lose a press box, so then we would have no press box. For, for use, so those are the, the topics. Uh, Mike was looking into a lift, because then we would have to get like a lift rental. Um, to accompany a bleacher rental for a long term, and, and so that was, um. Looking to be a little bit more costly, but he's, he's still getting some numbers, uh, on what that would look like for the next couple of years, if that was, um. You know, just to inform the discussions and, and conversations, nothing, uh, for or against, but purely. Let the data inform the, you know, the decisions as much as possible. Um, as it relates to the cost for other things. Um, contracts, Greg was looking into, I believe, Brian, right? The, the contract aspects for Huntress and, and Colliers, because I, I don't know. Uh, there is a cost associated, right? Um, their contract was for a certain, certain period. Their contract is specifically for what the RFP was for, which was designs for bleacher and facility, and so. Um, any changes to the scope of that project would be at an added cost. We'd have to put out for bid another RFP. Um, we only got two applicants for this RFP whom we put it out, so. That's a concern. My concern personally is also the vendor relationship. That, you know, potentially would be, you know, harmed if, um. You know, I, I don't know, these are all things to think about, but yes, there is a cost. I don't know the dollar associated, the cost with that. Um, and just generally the project, you know, we already got the number three point one million. It's not going to get any cheaper. That, you know, as time goes on, I think Huntress put the escalation price, I think he, he factored that in. So in four months, it would be another like fifty plus thousand, so there's a formula that they have. That will show how much the project would escalate in cost as it continues. Um, I do think, Mary, to your point, the, it's a shock, like, you know, it took. Like, for, for me, under the school committees, had these conversations a little bit more on a regular basis. The community is just kind of tuning in right now, I think. And so that, that, well, that three million number is a shock for everybody. We just heard about it. January seventeenth is the first time it even was provided, but the bathroom requirement, right, the scope of that. That was pretty, is pretty extensive, and it does require, I think, time to process. Um, I would be in favor of, of delaying, uh, an approval and. If the, no, the board would do that. I did ask the CPC last night about that impact like that. Um, because, um, if they, if, you know, if we're not having a project in the fall. I mean, in this, in, starting off in, in the spring, what would that do? And Lindy, uh, made a good point that. They could do an exception approval for a project outside their normal timeline, so they would be able to approve. They want, you know, they want to have their designs, and right now, it doesn't seem like the designs will be ready in time. For approval, and I think that's, that's kind of the, the part that people are kind of stuck on. A little bit is that we don't have solid designs back, and, you know, what is the difference in? Between spring and the fall, if we were going to be renting maybe anyway. I think it's going to be that we are going to be paying more. It might be that the, the same outcome, it just allows time for people to process. And feel more informed with the decision, so.
Can I just ask you a question on that point about, um, approving something out of the normal, would you say the normal?
Normal cycle, yeah, their normal, yeah, the CPC.
Decision on February twenty-first, so does that mean that they would vote anyway in favor? Of them helping us with bleachers or?
Um, it, it sounded, and again, they haven't voted, they asked some questions last night. Brian presented, um, a proposed, you know, maintenance plan that, you know, what you would consider or what, you know, based on what we have right now. And the question of bonding was, was seriously discussed, um, even if it was partial bonding. You know, even if it was just maybe one million, like based on what they're capa, they, they, they asked me or this. This is, well, what does a school committee want us, you know, is asking, and, and my, my feeling, and I don't, was. Do what you can. I, I, I mean, I, I, I don't think anyone's going to turn around, turn away any type of help. If they, as a board, feel like their purview or what they, what they can do is only bond for one million dollars, then great, appreciative. You know, if they're saying, you know what, we can only give one hundred thousand dollars to this project, thank you very much as well, you know. I, I think that I don't want to be, I don't think I would want to be. I don't think it's my role or our role as a school committee necessarily to be telling them how to use their money. I think we put the application in. This is what they need, them as a board, they know their finances better than, than when we would need to come to the conclusion on what they feel. Um, they can do, and I know there's been other, like, the FinCom has had opinions, you know, everyone has had some thoughts. Um, Rick, uh, Rick Laffery, he, he actually talked about bonding, you know, partial bonding and they. Of what that might look like, you know, uh, Lindy as well, but then there were some other members of the CPC who. Um, one member said, well, if you're going to bond with the town for two million, just bond for the whole thing then. You know, so there's that, you know, back and forth of them, but it did seem that, that we would get, we would be able to get. A decision from them before we would go to the fall town meeting, and then we would have the election. You know, after, in November.
Thank you.
Morrow?
Can you, can you maybe do Elizabeth next?
Okay, sure, Elizabeth?
Um, yeah, I, I guess, I guess I want to make sure that if we delayed it, we are delaying it, I imagine, with the purpose of trying to make sure we answer all the questions people have. And so I'm just making sure that we can get those answers, so that we, if we're going to delay this, there should be a result, and the result should be that we have the answer.
I, I think that's the intent, um, is.
We need to be like systematic about it, like I know I've heard things about the size of bleachers and, you know, asking more questions about the, the, the cost of all that. You know, you have questions about the fields, any questions about bringing up the project, you know, those, all of those things, are we going to? I think, first of all, can we get those answers? Second of all, will this money get those answers?
I, I think this time would be utilized to help, you know, provide those answers in a more public way. Um, we talked at, at the, the design meeting, recirculating the survey, because that was a, a feeling that making sure that. It, it's clear that public input has been solicited at some point, leading up to, uh, the RFP conversation. Which, from what I recall, when the survey was put out, I want to say it was like February or so, it was before we met. With our joint meeting with the select board, because I think there were some, some members who were not happy with the questions. Because it asked about turf explicitly, and the feeling was that's really outside the scope of the project, and they didn't want. You know, to consider that, but either way, the survey was there, I think it had six hundred respondents, um, to, to that. And so that will be, I think, Brian, you said that that was going to be uploaded to the, the project website as well?
Uh, it may be already, um, it's been uploaded.
Okay. So that, and then the other answers about the size of the bleachers, that was part of what Huntress was. Working on a scenario of what would that lower, like seven hundred and fifty, you know, seating, I think. Some folks, you know, compared it to Asa Bit, and what, what that would look like. Um, impacting the, the restroom facility and, you know, the cost for, for bleachers themselves, so.
Is there any, can we get the answers to these questions soon enough that we don't have to wait?
I, I don't know if, well, the designs aren't going to be ready before, before the, um. A, a warrant article would have to be created, so that won't, that'll be definitely not happening. All we have is the estimate for, for that. Um, I think the scenario of a smaller footprint for, for bleachers and that, I think was, Huntress was already working on it, so Brian. I don't know if, um, if you could follow up with Phil or about that.
Yeah, we may want to invite Colliers and Huntress to our next school meeting to present what they have found out. And answer the question about what's in their purview, what's not in their purview, is in the scope of this project? If it's not, what would it take and what would likely, I mean, this is their business, what would the cost impact be? Since I feel like we're, we're asking good questions, but we don't, like, we know what the, a nine hundred fifty seat bleacher. With code compliant bathrooms and concessions. With code compliant bathrooms and concessions. On that facility, we know what that costs, but that's involved. And there's lots of other questions, but I think they may, given a couple of weeks, they may be able to get into those questions.
Well, we had asked them about that particular scenario about costing out a smaller size. I think the meeting before. Two weeks ago, and I, I thought Chris that he was going to have something for this week. And I don't know if we need a whole presentation on, on that. It might just be some. Some numbers that, based on a smaller size and what the impact to the estimate provided would be. That would be a good starting point. And then maybe from there, that might be. So if we get that information, I think that will help inform, like, if there's other questions. But I don't know if that's. The timing.
And information from him to say, like, the question, the discussion you're having tonight about, should we postpone until? What does that look like for them? Like. We could ask him that in advance and we could answer it, or it could just be on screen or be here. Uh, that may be a better conversation.
I personally would, would rather them come. I don't need to see a presentation, but I would like to answer these questions, like. You know, the cost, you know, if. I don't want them to come and us ask questions and then say, I don't know the answer. I'd like to give them the questions beforehand so that we. Get the question, get the answers that we need before.
If, um, what I would suggest then, Brian, um. Because we can't vote on our recommendation tonight anyway, because it was kind of an added um last minute, but it was a conversation piece for us at least. Think about for next steps, because the select board at their meeting um certainly discuss. Concerns and and a possibility to delay um for the fall, because they, they do have to recommend the debt exclusion. And, and so there is, I mean, we would want the select board, you know, backing this project, right? I mean, that's the whole, and, and I think that's the goal, is what do we, how do we get everyone feeling comfortable with like, this is. This is what's required in in the capacity and, you know, to the other feedback that we've heard, what is maybe a more comprehensive plan on? Is there phase one? And this is phase one. Is there phase two, you know, that we're looking at, you know, turf and. And fields and and, you know, is that, how do we consider that, you know, when do we consider that? So I think those are the, you know, larger things is we're not, I think the idea is. Do what we need, but make sure we're not excluding um the possibility for other things. And I think we've talked about that already. By making sure that even if it is just bleachers that is built and certain thing that the. The, the track and the field, nothing will eliminate the possibility of other um phase two or any projects to occur. Um, so Brian, maybe if we can see if. Just check to see if maybe we could, we could schedule a special meeting, maybe just for this. And then we might be able to, to vote on it.
I'm thinking that if we all kind of sent our questions to Brian or to you. So that, again, like Mara was saying, they have the questions before they meet with us.
Well, some of these questions they should already have, because I brought them up a couple of times. So I, I will happily. Let's put them in writing again if we want to reiterate them for sure. And I know um they have questions from the select board. Um, because Greg sent over the select board's question to uh Phil and and Brian and you as well, right? So. There are some questions already. Um, already there, but the, the, the scenario planning of a smaller footprint, that is one that was asked a couple of times already. So I think that's the most crucial that we need to get answered.
And it'd be good to know what the cost would be i- i- if we delay. Now, you know, I think that, I don't think I've asked yet in all of this, up them directly. Um, and then, you know, I had a memory, I remember when we first started this project back in October twenty twenty two, I think it was, we were at the select board meeting. And I remember thinking at that point that the bleachers would be like a shed, that you would just like walk in a place and it's like, was that going to cost like a hundred thousand dollars? Big deal. And I remember that they were the ones who said, you know, it's maybe like two and a half, three hundred dollars. And I remember being shocked. They said that back in twenty twenty two. So, and so, so the fact that now it's a shop is three, which is kind of surprising to me, because they were the blue shop fee. That in twenty twenty two, in a way that I still remember. So, so I don't, I don't know that, I think they must in some way know that this project does not get much. You know, I don't think that there's going to be a savings where it's going to be the back of a thousand dollar dream that I had when I first started. They knew that already.
Yeah, and and Greg, to his credit, he, you know, he reminded, like, we, this was something that started off one million, and then it goes up to one five, like, COVID happened. And then the cost of construction goes up. So I, I think it's just sticker shock that everyone, like, it's not going to be, it hasn't. The direction of the price is not going lower. It's not, the trajectory is going higher. It's just, when are we going to make a decision about? What it, what that decision is and when do we want to feel like it's something we need to act on? So, and I, I do think, um. There was information, Brian, I don't know if you, you share this, um, the town did a cost. A rough uh cost estimate of what the per household. I can't remember where I read this, but I know it was in the select board meeting of that breakdown and it was like sixty dollars a year for. An override um per household. So just from a individual household perspective of what that would look like to the pocket. Of the average. Alright, so takeaways, um. If anyone has any particular questions, if you can send them to me, Brian, I, and see, well, both of us, you can send them to both of us. I just want to make sure that I. Can see the questions as well, um, because there might be some. Overlap. And then Brian, you'll work with Huntress to get a, a time that. Okay. That would be great.
Natasha, um, I just had another question for um for Brian. Did um. Did Mike revisit the, like, the. Uh, the seating and how much?
So I think there's kind of a, I mean, and we could go to seven fifty, but I think they looked at, they looked at, they used to have two bleachers. And if you look at most recently done athletic conferences, they've gone to one side of the bleachers, because it's more efficient.
Right.
Right.
Also went from twelve fifteen down to nine fifty now.
Right, so if we go much lower side, and this is from, you know, Chris from Converse this year. To go to seven fifty, you could do that. It saves a little bit on the bleacher. It isn't, doesn't save much on the bathroom, which I think for us, I'm speaking for the whole community, but. We were often surprised that bathrooms were cold now. So six months ago, that wasn't cold. So the building, so you can, you will see new athletic conferences that built last three, four years, beautiful, don't need batteries. And were much cheaper, like that was the quote at the time. So given what we have now, he's been pretty clear that, you know. You are, you could ask for variances for different things within the formal codes, you're not. So they have looked at that. So the seven fifty in. Probably being with soccer game, football game, graduation, it's probably, now we're talking about all the families and students from, in bigger school. From Hudson, coming to watch the game and involve the major families, etc. We often have the band on in. Bleachers as well, so there's another fifty, fifty or so, maybe a hundred. Um, and we don't, yeah. We're on platforms around. So we have, you know, we have rooms that ate up space that didn't always have space. So they're pretty confident in that number and savings from what I, or it was minimum, but Crystal really spoke that. Specifically.
Um, and one thing I.
Somebody in the audience questioned, I didn't know who was on them.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just wanted to, um, to add to this. Um, one thing that I have heard as well recently, because. We don't have bleachers is that a lot of the, like, there have been people who have been, you know, bringing chairs and they've been using them on the track. And the concern is, you know, is that putting more wear on the track? Um, because I don't know the track was intended to have a lot of, like, you know, the camper chairs or whatnot. And, and so that's, you know, again, we don't, at the cost of. What we, you know, not having something, are we, you know, unintended, um, you know, shortening the life of our facilities elsewhere? So, um.
So I'll reach out to the professionals and get some answers for us and have them provide those, not a presentation of what bleachers look like, but just. Being able to answer questions.
And we'll send questions to you, because better than twice.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and then, and then also, Brian, um, a, a timeline, I guess, would be, you know, what that. If an alternative timeline to if it looks like the fall. Would be, um, how, what would that, might that look like? Um. Yeah.
Answers, the question and the answers are written, or who would have it, just they could watch the meeting and have them say, oh, have the answers to the questions. I think that people in the community.
He can do that. Now, we can, we can, we can go over, or I'll even post on the website.
And then my understanding is that when we have those answers, that would be potentially next meeting. And then that would be, like, based on what we find out of what the cost would be and adjustments we could make and what would cost to extend the time. We can make it a decision about whether we're extending it or not. Is that, is probably all agreeing on that?
We will need to soon provide a recommendation, um. If we want to recommend delaying into the fall. So that's why I'm saying would, wouldn't be, I don't think we can wait till our next meeting. I think it would have to come before then, because the warrant article, like, there's a lot of other. Steps, the CPC is making their decision on the twenty first, their meeting, so it would really need to be something before then. Um, that we should. You know, make a vote.
I'm not sure they will have answers by then. I don't want to speak for them on what's on their workload and what's related. And maybe they will be able to, I don't. Want to promise something that I.
Well, I just for the school committee, then, we are going to have to make a decision with whatever information we can before the, the twenty first.
I've got a thought, um, knowing that the um CPC is going to be having their meeting on the twenty first, which is a Wednesday. And we may change our meeting to, to that day before, so that then. We'll have made a decision and then it'll help them make a decision. I don't know what anybody's schedule looks like.
I think that is, that's, was it February Vacation Week, right? Um. The twentieth. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not available on the twentieth. Um. We can, we can talk, we can talk about, or the.
That would be my recommendation, so that then, so if we could do it, the twentieth, I know it's school vacation. Um, and at least that way the CPC, if they are going to help at all, they at least have information from us. That would help them make their decision.
Information from, from the fifteenth, but the nineteenth, like, I'm just trying to give them directions so they can get in. And I don't know if they can do, but, but when would you?
Brian, they, they got, they already, the question about the scenario for the seating, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but that's been asked a couple of times already. And I know that they've been helpful and they put a meaning, so that shouldn't be a new ask. That should just be following up on a prior ask. Um, so hopefully that's already in process, because it did require him to reach out to the vendor. To, to get some costing and I recognize that, but it's not a new request. Um, Mary, I can't do the, I can't do the twentieth. But we, we can talk offline as far as when to schedule that, but I get your point about before the CPC meets, I think is the critical piece, right?
I'm wondering whether or not if you send your, your email, just ask, yeah, and ask whether or not there's, there's any way that they could get us. Something for sometime next week, Thursday, Friday, whatever.
Sure.
Yeah, because if we can get. I think it would have to be probably sometime next week, even if it's later in the week, we can have a special meeting. For, for that purpose only. And then, um. And then also that will help inform the select board, because I believe then the select board will be meeting shortly thereafter as well. So.
Tom, it's been standing.
Yes, Tom, um, public comments has ended, um, so I don't, I know we're.
We're fifteen minutes over right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so normally I wouldn't allow, we don't allow just from a protocol, just comments after the agenda item is closed. But if you want to, um, since you've heard us talk about scheduling a special meeting. Um, or if you enter, you want to send an email, you certainly can try to address there if you have some thoughts. But I'm not looking to open public comments again right now. Alright, is that? Tom, do you want to just send an email? Because right now I'm not going to be accepting public comments.
Wasn't a public comment, but it was part of the committee. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear if there was something else. I just.
That it wasn't a public comment, it was because it was part of the committee, the subcommittee.
Oh, if there was a conversation piece about the subcommittee, sure.
That, that's what it was.
I didn't hear. That's why I, I, I just thought you want, you had public comments. So I just want to make sure it's, it's kept with the, the scope of the, yeah, the design project. Sure, absolutely.
It's just a term in the design. So when you shake your questions to Colliers or to Hunter, because he's been, he's been fantastic. In conversations with him, there's a, we've asked a lot of those projects. In the gleeker, and they've done a great job with scoping, basically putting a contract and build, build a spec. Right? So they're doing, as Chris has told, they're doing a lot more training than normal. For a, let's get a warrant article in place to get a. Point something, get a plug on the ready to do a plug. So when you're asking, you ask, maybe if you ask in the scope of, we're doing, you know, from a master planning perspective. What numbers can you give us on a master planning? As opposed to a lot, he's doing a lot of really detailed work, right? And it's all great work. It, it's not. It's not money that will be lost. Everything that they're doing is value that you will be able to carry forward from a strategic perspective. It may not cost the same, but the value, either you're funding, you're willing to change, right? There, there's, so that work is, is really important, it's valuable, so. You wouldn't want to stop what they're doing, because they've done their work, we want to get that out. But asking for master planning type numbers about what it, what it, what it, opposed to asking. What, what sort of underlying validation happens, so you don't necessarily want those questions, but a master plan number should be valuable. And because they need those projects a lot, I mean, he's done a hundred, he should be able to do those types of answers very quickly. Or at least with a minimal change to scope the topic. It's not, I don't, or she. So that was what I wanted to offer. And the other piece, uh, having been on the CPC, just to take the process question. The CPC can entertain and something at any point I'm here. So long as the steps of the process are followed to. Change the pack, getting grant package, completely grant package, having someone here and discuss the grant. And then prepare the one of, but it just so happens that the way we time up this process, we always time it this budget meeting. It makes the most sense. But if, if you need to delay. And then have this brought up, you done that in some special town meeting or another time, the process is the process. It's just the way the main secrecy work, we, we scale that process around this. So it's, it just takes me that of cycle for us, for them, but I'm just.
Did happen, so they have seen, it's like, I have not heard that before.
Yeah, it's not, it makes more work for them, because, you know, there's like a busy time, there's a lot of busy times. But it is, from, from the loose perspective, nothing perfect.
When you say public meeting.
Yes, CPC has that a public being to, to, before they, the meeting that the CPC has to vote and. Project to recommend the forward for that part has to be a poll.
Okay.
Yes, that's the, that's the first meeting that, that, that you're talking, that's the public.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate that. Um, and Brian, before, actually. In, in your note, homework notes, um, can you follow up with Greg, just to ensure that he is actually planning to have a special town meeting? Those are not guaranteed. We've historically had them, but that was a question the CPC had, is to, um. Because that would put a kink in, in that delay plan, if there is actually no special town meeting planned already.
Yep, I will ask.
Okay. Alright, so I think everyone feel okay with some direction and we'll look to schedule something uh the end of next week. Sound good? Okay. Alright, um, Chair Report, I don't have anything um to add, uh, except for. Uh, confirming, uh, everyone will be in person on Saturday. If that's. The plan. I know Chris, that was the only thing I wanted to follow up on. Chris De Silva was asking the. Um, oh wait, we gotta go back to your, sorry, we skipped over your thing. I'm just sorry. I went too far ahead, Brian. Okay, going back Superintendent Midyear Evaluation. Brian.
So I have submitted. Uh, there's a couple of documents in tonight's folder for you, one being the mid-year review, one being superintendent's checklist. Both thanks, Tom, both of which are in the folder. For Superintendent Evaluation Information Twenty Three, Twenty Four. That particular folder has. Lots of information from just the general communications, from the weekly smores that I send out to the superintendent. You get, um. So there's a lot more information in there as well. So this particular. Document for the mid-year review goes through an overview of what superintendent will encompass. So on a broad scale is leadership and vision. Some examples in terms of what things that I've been doing. First half of this year to support leadership and vision. Such as, and I could, I, I won't beat them all. I'll just tell you the high level. Probably already read it, which they get questions about them, administrative oversight, personnel management, community engagement. Policy development and implementation. Routine instruction, advocacy and communication. And crisis management. And then it follows into feature the goals. For this year. Uh, with. Mon, progress monitoring, if you will, and then measuring impact. Mr. reading to you, I'm sure you all look at it back and give you us questions or I'm not sure.
Mary, I'll, I'll start. Thank you, Brian. I don't know if there's anything in particular, Brian, you wanted to. Highlight as, um. In the progress, maybe I was looking at. If you wanted to mention or call out like what changes from your original goal or anything that we might. Want to have a discussion point or, I don't know, just from what you originally planned versus. Um, where we find ourselves now.
I'm feeling like we are on track. We've accomplished several things. Many more things to do this year. We are hitting busy time. Um, we've clearly focused a lot on budget in the last couple of months. Moving back into district improvement plan, decaps and the literacy initiative, updates and math curriculum. And N E S, which is coming in another month. So it's busy.
All right, uh, Mary.
I know. Uh, Elizabeth and I have been working with Chuck and Brian up to this point, so it looks really, really good. Um, just a couple of. Oh. Anything, um, so first of all, it's just, just to make sure that. Things are done the way that we. Um, should better analyze at the end of the year, uh, the literacy map, um, curriculum. I just wanted to make sure so that the, um, the, the last, well, it says, swap me presentation on there's an app curriculum using data of a lot. Just want to make sure, you know, we brought this up for to have the principals use the presentation template that keep talking about. Because it hasn't been done and it really will help, um, you know, to, to keep everything consistent. So. Oh, and then, um, the, the second call. Question and practice, we, um, the benchmark, the third pull it down, text about presentations. Using best to school night and curriculum nights to be posted on the website. I couldn't find that anywhere. So if you wouldn't mind, like, you know, I, I went back to try and see. I could find. Um, the nation. On, on that, because it was, it's having to do with Desi, with the, the data walk and that. So. Trying to.
That the presentation, you're saying the presentation was on the screen.
So should, I think it was the feedback that was from the, um, Baptist night, the curriculum nights. Um, they, they, um.
So data.
Information. Right, exactly. Couldn't find it anywhere. So.
Just.
Again. Yep, that's. Yeah, it's there. Is it there somewhere? I just could not locate it. So that's me. I don't know. This is the survey. Oh, and then just about the, um. Let's see, communication and community outreach. It was, um, the, the, um, website is going to be updated and included as a school command. I don't know if Adam was updating it as we go through the year. I would just like to be able to know like two weeks beforehand, okay? This is the finished product so that we can, you know, independently before we actually get his presentation. Okay, take a look at you guys, just so that then if you're knowledgeable, um, if there's any changes that we, so you know, it would be helpful. That's it.
Good.
Why is it so?
Thank you for the feedback.
Mauro.
I didn't have anything, any specific, um, to answer questions, um, but I was. Impressed as to. Like if I got locked up and, and there weren't. There weren't any, like, when I read through it, there wasn't anything that was like. Laring, like, we are really missing on this point. So I'm very happy with it.
This been helpful.
Uh, I have no questions. I, I like that. It will not matter. It was better. Um, and I, I actually had a question for Chuck, actually, that's to be told us this is, please write it down in the place. Um, what would you decide to choose for the map, that is sufficient shows?
Yeah. Uh, we're going to be piloting illustrative now. So.
Both of them.
Not, not, whatever the first.
You know, we, we made inquiries to, to the staff, uh, and the building principals, and there really was no, no significant. Actually, no push for, for third one, just. Made it available for sort of one last go around, but finally that. So we're going with those two. We've contacted both companies. We're in the process of booking training dates right now. Uh, and. Implement, um. If it goes as we have sketched out, we'll be piloting illustrative math for three weeks in the beginning of March. And then Carnegie map for three weeks leading into the April vacation. Um, we'll be doing training for the Carnegie now, uh. Even sort of about, uh, you know, week after February vacation, um, and then we'll begin training for Carnegie at the end of March leading, uh. Into those three weeks, um, and then we'll be making a recommendation.
And both of those are capable.
Yes.
And then, and both of those are house in Spanish.
Yes. Um. Also, uh. Here still exists possibility of adopting. It would be. In watch and create. So there exists the possibility of adopting one K to five and the other six eight. Uh. So. It will, we'll, we'll see.
Yeah, that was fine.
I appreciate you doing that, putting that top, top, formal, whatnot. I think for all.
Yeah, I definitely like this. Lot of.
Yes.
Um. I, uh, the district improvement. Plan and the curriculum. So that's on target for March. Twenty twenty four, that's next month.
Second meeting in March.
Okay, so, um, I know that part of the other, I'm looking at just the, the monitoring for goal three in particular, um. The, um, that one, I just wanted to confirm. It looks like it says it's in progress for, for March. And I just, I'm guessing that that's also going to be tied to the website. Also update, right? Because I know that part of it is, there's some outdated information about the, the district information. And so all that's going to be revamped as well on the website.
Website will be updated. It really, I mean, I don't want to give you the wrong impression that it's going to look brand new because we're tied.
Right, no.
One, two, three, four, five.
Totally understand that.
But the information, like, for example, we wanted to get more information out about the building projects. So that was, let's create that and then drop them for. Future and grid map, but things like that, you'll see.
Okay.
Right about your kind of information. So I, it looks great. So you'll see that as well. I'm getting you. So first, it's part of the human resource. Totally, but it's part of the website.
So the, um, in, in the goal three, where you talk about the benchmark, the school presentation of the revised website at the end of the year to solicit. So I'm, that's what I'm wondering is those, like, all of that would be more, because part of when we set that goal was people had a hard time finding, you know, finding things. So there was a lot of clicks. To get to. And then I know that it is a work in progress and it's never going to be, you know. A hundred percent, but for the things, and I would love what they did with the project. I think there's so much happening that was great that you were able to work to get that. Um, I would also want to make. Hmm?
That's the type of thing that you will see, but again, we're kind of constantly working on that this year to make it more accessible, less clicks. The next, one of the other things we're currently working on is, um, how to make the LPAC information more accessible. So you'll see that when we show that.
Okay.
Example.
That's great. Because I know that we have like next month is also when we're looking to get another LPAC. Um, update as well. Correct? Or is that, it says March twenty four. Feel like a lot happening by, by March. That's why I want to make sure you're okay with that. Or do we foresee that maybe? Um, shifting in some way?
No, I think updates. I think we're on track.
Okay. All right. Um, I know you've been doing a lot. There's a lot of happenings around and I thank you. For. For the work, you and the team. I know this is. Looking at the, uh, the checklist. I know that, that. Is falls under your purview, but I know it's not all you who does every single one of those things. So thanks for, um, like. You know, making sure that they all get done and for all the, the team that's supporting all those requirements. Um. I know the literacy piece, this is one thing that I wanted to. Mention because I, I know Maynard was, you know, recently. Referenced in one of a series of articles about literacy. And there's a lot of conversations around literacy and continue to happen. Uh. I would like to make sure that we're all aligned with what. You know, with the messages of what we're trying to do. I think your, your goals represent relying on like curate and all of that. But I also want to make sure that if there's a feeling where those are not the best tools, it would really be great to hear that. Also, those hesitations and what that might be, because I know that other districts have expressed concern about. What that looks like and why certain tools may be. Less useful. I just want that to be a conversation that we hear at the school committee level as well. If, um. If there's reason that certain information might not be in the best interest of our students. And, and why the district leadership team might feel that way. Okay. All right. And then just for the rest of the school committee, there's just, there was a letter that, there's a couple of letters, the things are, you know, it's just literacy and dyslexia are very. Very much in the public verbiage and there's certain districts have signed on to a letter about literacy and I think it was sent to the, was it to Desi, Brian? Lexington.
Yeah.
At Lexington, yeah. So, um, we might, we might hear some feedback on it. Okay. Oh. Oops, sorry, Alexa. I did, I just. Broke Alexa, um. Anything else?
Not for me. Thank you for the feedback.
Okay, Brian, thank you for your work and your continued work. And I love the checklist, by the way. I'm really glad that that we've done that because I just, I think that just ties into all the. Those standards that happen always outside of the goals that are created. So Chair Report. The only thing I just took a circle back was just asking about Saturday. I know the select board was hoping that members would be. Present in person. And I think Colleen, you mentioned that it looked like they posted it as only an in-person meeting. Correct?
Certainly, all in person.
Yeah, which I just heard about today. So I just want to make sure with that in mind. It sounds like we all need to be in person if we want to attend. I know Hillary won't be, uh, in attendance, but, uh. Mary, you said you'll, you'll be there, right? Mauro, you're there. Elizabeth, are you planning?
Something that. Now that I can't remember, there's a chance I can't be there, but I'll, I'll know in a minute after the meeting. So I'll.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, I think that. As long as we have a quorum. So I mean, I'll, I'll be there. Hopefully I won't be. Hopefully I'll contain whatever's happening around my house. So. Um, if not, I might be masked. So, okay. At least we'll have a quorum. That's the plan. And then I don't think they're going to have a public comments as well. I think that was the other part. They want to have more conversation amongst the boards. So, you know, Brian's going to present. It's going to be a shorter presentation and then. There's going to be conversations. Um. About, I think what we said override water, all those things that we always. Talk about, but we don't actually ever do anything about. Okay. I don't have any other updates. Um. Moving on to subcommittee. Reports, Mary, anything? No, Mauro.
Um.
Policy.
Uh, we had policy, um, yeah. This today. Sorry, it's Monday this week. We had policy, um, and, um, we've come up with a, a way that we're going to deal with, um. The, the policies. We kind of figured out that we have approximately two hundred and eighty policies. Um, total, and over the last four years, only gone through one hundred of them. Um, because of. And this is the mass policy that we're trying to adopt because we're trying to match. And so. Um. It's just, it's not, it's not work. Um, so, uh, we've come up with a. Think a good way of forward that we're gonna start on in a couple of weeks. And, uh, we're gonna just plug away. Starting with. The mask and making them our own, um. So that's what we.
So, um, are you thinking that beginning at our next? Regular meeting, we'll need to have policies back on our agenda and start chipping away? Is that what the plan is?
Uh, yes, that's, that is what we're hoping that we'll be able to do. And what, what? The thought process, no, not, not our next meeting, the one after. So the, the thought processes, we're going to be before our next meeting. And, um, be able to have, um, you know, a good chunk. Um, accomplished during that meeting. And then, once we get that accomplished, we will send out those. To. Our committee so that you have, say, two weeks. To take, to take a look at the amount that we've got, uh, before our next meeting for our first three.
So our next school, regular school committee meeting is the twenty ninth of February. You don't think we'll have anything for then? Oh, wow. Okay, none? That was a hard, that was a hard no. Okay.
Um, no, because, because of, uh, Vacation Week.
Yeah, got it, got it.
So like that Tuesday, Wednesday, and that's not enough time for us to. Um, get those together and so that all of us, all of us as a committee be able to, to really read through them. For that, that Thursday. It's just not, it's just not possible.
So what is the difference in the process space?
Well, no, because basically what the, what the process before was. Taking a mass policy, comparing it with our old policy. And trying to marry them to not.
Yeah.
And it, it's just, it's ridiculously complex. So what we're, what we decided. So what we're, what we decided to do, it's just take the mass, mass policy and and, you know, make it so that you think that it matters what we're really trying to do.
And then do we have to do something to get rid of it?
Yes, we'll still need to reset.
It don't. All right, yeah. That's the number that we put to do in the policy meetings, figuring out which one we send it for this.
Yeah, I see.
Mauro, would um, is the, is the part of that process like a sheet that, like, kind of like, we'll have like a list of these are all the policy names and then what they kind of correspond to, so that we can each kind of do our own homework offline, like this one is that one, this one is that one, this one is that one?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. And then, and we don't anticipate needing a special meeting for policy. You feel like that can be?
Well, I mean, we're, we can, we go through this first rendition, and then if we feel like, no, this really isn't working, then, you know, maybe we'll have to do that. But uh, you know, I think, Chris and I both feel like this, this way should work well.
Okay. All right. So I think we'll just kind of take your lead on that and um, more to come.
Yep.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. And the consent agenda?
No minutes. We do have warrants forty two, forty three, forty four, forty five, forty six, actually forty six and forty seven.
That those are today, right? So it's just forty three through forty five?
Two through forty five.
Forty two, okay. So without objection, I will move that we accept the approved warrants for twenty four, zero forty two, zero forty three, zero forty four, and zero forty five. Okay, hearing no objections. Those are accepted. And then now we will move into executive session under M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, to discuss collective bargaining with teachers and custodian union. Since an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This committee does not intend to return to open session. Okay, roll call vote, Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albora? Yes, okay, Natasha Rivera, yes.